I'd like to welcome everyone. To do this event, my name is Linda Popke. Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of South San Mateo County, I welcome the candidates and especially you, the audience, to the Street Public Forum for the Ravenswood School District. I'm Linda Popke and I will be your moderator for this evening. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan volunteer organization of women and men. Our educational mission is to encourage your active and informed participation in government at every level. The League does not endorse candidates or political parties. Our sole interest is in helping voters gain fair and unbiased information in order to make an informed decision on or before Election Day, November 3rd. In addition to this forum, I encourage you to visit the California State League of Women Voters election website, which is VotersEdge.org for information about all the candidates and measures on your ballot. Please note that this forum is being recorded. It will be available for replay on our League website soon. This 2020 election series is the first time the League has hosted candidate forums online via Zoom webinars. So let me just go over the procedures for tonight's candidate forum. Please know, first of all, if your connection drops, you may easily rejoin by returning to your confirmation email and once again clicking the unique link that you received after you registered. During registration for this event, members of the public were invited to submit questions for the candidates. The questions you hear tonight have been drawn from those submissions. Questions from the audience are also welcome during tonight's forum and we will ask them of the candidates if time permits. To send our team a question for the candidates during the event, please type the question into the Q and A function at the bottom of your Zoom screen. A lead member has drawn numbers to determine which candidate goes first. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. A volunteer will monitor the time. Our timekeeper tonight is Ora Chacon. She will hold the yellow paddle, candidates when you have 30 seconds left, and then a red paddle when your time is up. And we do ask that you please try to observe the time limits for us. There are two seats to be elected to the Ravenswood School District. There are seven candidates. Five of those candidates are here with us tonight. These candidates are in alphabetical order. Bronwyn Alexander, Jenny Vargis Bloom, Zeb Feldman, Marilena Gaona Mendoza, and Joel Rivera. Now, the candidate speaking order was randomly determined by drawing lots in advance by the League for the order of the opening statements. The reverse order will be used for the closing statements. So the order of speaking is as follows. Zeb Feldman, Bronwyn Alexander, Jenny Vargis Bloom, Joel Rivera, and Marilena Gaona Mendoza. So, welcome candidates. So, before you make your opening statements, I'd like you to include in there some of our audiences interested in what your connection is to the Ravenswood School District. So if you can just mention that in your opening statements, and Zeb, we are going to begin with you.
Wonderful, thank you. Hello and welcome, everybody, and thank you to the League for sponsoring this. My name is Zeb Feldman and I want to share a few things about me. A few things, as I mentioned, I've lived in East Palo Alto for 11 years, hence my strong connection with the community. I was born in Guadalajara, that's in Jalisco in Mexico, and I immigrated to the US as a small child. I grew up in the public system and I have advocated for social and economic justice my entire life. I really stand for three things. One is keeping our property taxes local to better fund our schools. Two, enhance support for students in and out of the classroom. And three, opposing charter schools to get more resources back to all students. That means complete education for all students who will either go to the workplace shortly after they graduate. That means beyond Ravenswood in high school. And so they get real skills. And I'm looking deeply into apprenticeship programs. I have a deep connection with unions in the area. It's been my part of my career, I've been a unionized firefighter, and now I negotiate union contracts. Also, I'm interested in enhancing the quality of education by keeping existing property taxes local, coordinating fundraising with community partners, and recruiting quality teachers, but also other support staff, not just teachers. I'm also an advocate, as I mentioned, of reducing the presence of charter schools that take away much-needed funds from all students and all staff. So my focus will be the improvement of our district's ability to educate all districts, all district students, not just a select few. I have the expertise. The most recent contract I negotiated was in excess of $2.2 billion, that's with a B, billion dollars. The importance of my daily job is reflected in every person I serve. As I mentioned, I'm a union contract negotiator. My primary duty is to safeguard their workplace rights, wages, and ability to care for their workers as well as better serve the public. My unique skills and policy expertise, budget caning, and coalition building experience are exactly what our district needs. Please support me, I am truly asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Zeb. Bronwyn, we'd like to hear your opening statement, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bronwyn Alexander. Thank you very much for having us this evening. Through our schools, we build our future. As your school board member, I will promote policies which will prepare our students for high school and beyond. This means having strong academic programs and safe, healthy classrooms, ensuring equity and equal access for all students, wellness programs to support students and families, especially in this time of pandemic. It means having a school board that respects the teachers, parents, and community, and works to make collaborative decisions about our schools. As a veteran teacher of 28 years, I understand classroom needs. With 15 years teaching within the Ravenswood City School District, I am uniquely qualified to understand the challenges faced by our students on a daily basis. I came to Ravenswood in 2006 to teach at Bellhaven School and was immediately attracted to the neighborhood. Like many families there, I had lived in Michoacan, Mexico. I moved to Bellhaven in 2011. After teaching in the classroom for many years, I started receiving professional development to be an instructional coach and eventually left the classroom to be a teacher on special assignment at Bellhaven doing instructional coaching and reading intervention. I had planned on retiring from this school district. But I knew that as a classroom teacher, I had impact over the students just in my room every year. As a coach, I knew I had an impact on a greater number of students as I worked with their teachers around best practices. Then I realized I could have even more of an impact as a school board member. So I made a difficult decision to leave Ravenswood in order to run for school board this year. I've never aspired to politics, but I felt that it was time for me to challenge myself in order to better serve the children and families of Ravenswood. I applaud the work our current superintendent Gina Sudaria is doing. There is transparency in the decision-making process. Before Ravenswood was polarized, now it is very clear that we are one Ravenswood.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Jenny, we'd like to hear your opening statement, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jenny Vargis Bloom. I am a parent here in the district. I have a daughter that just started kindergarten in our Ravenswood School District. And I decided to run because I have been paying attention as an educator, as someone who works with students, about what has been happening in our district. And especially since my kids were going to start entering that process soon. I also have a son who is in the preschool at Ravenswood, which used to be the preschool through Ravenswood, now it is run by the San Mateo County. So I have a very big stake in this district. So the reason I am running is because I believe in our community. I am part of this community, I've been part of this community. When my husband and I moved here from Los Angeles, and before that, I grew up in Texas, and I've always gone to public schools. We have always been educators, this is something that we truly cared about. And we chose East Palo Alto because of its strong community, its closeness, and just the roots that we've been able to establish here in East Palo Alto. The reason I am running is because I want to be a parent advocate. I want to be someone who actually knows what is happening in the district because I am directly affected by what is happening in the district. I want to be a person who is at the board and at the table because I know whatever decisions I'm making is going to directly affect me. And not just me, but every single student and parent in our district. So I really want to be that merging, so of, I want to be that person who is merging both those spaces. I want to merge the parent voice and also the board voice. And so when we're at the, when we're in board meetings, I want to be someone who is saying, this is what is happening in our district, and this is how it's affecting our kids. The other thing is, is I have experience in education. I have worked in preschools, I have an early, I have a master's in early childhood education. I have taught community college. I currently work with students who are applying to colleges as a college admission counselor. So I know what it takes to be successful in high school, and I know that I have what it takes to help our district move into the next step.
Great, thank you, Jenny. Joel, we'd like to hear your opening statement.
My name is Joel Rivera. Nobody knows better than parents what their kids need, and nobody works harder than teachers to provide our students to meet the challenges of tomorrow. As your school board member, I will focus on maintaining a team to make partnership, not politics, a priority. I will bring together people, teachers, staff, students, parents, administrators, and the school board. We need to have a school board that will continue to respect teachers and parents and work with them in partnership to make decisions about our school. I've lived in East Palo Alto for the past 20 years. My wife, Hesocita Rivera, was raised in East Palo Alto and is a teacher in Ravenswood at Castagna School. She has provided me with a lens, a unique lens, to see how we can best serve our children of Ravenswood. I've had the privilege of volunteering in her classroom over these past 20 years. I've been able to mentor and tutor students. I've been able to volunteer at many school activities. I helped to build one of the first sets for one of the first musicals at Castagna. Over my career in the construction industry, I started as a laborer in the union, worked my way up to superintendent, project manager, and currently I am the labor resource manager for my company that I work for. I've had been part of diverse teams, delivered multimillion-dollar projects on time and on budget, emphasizing teamwork and focusing on the end goal. And what a, and what a greater end goal to have than what we have here. And that's ensuring a proper and well-rounded education for the students of Ravenswood. There have been some recent improvements in our district, but there is still work to do. How do we do this? We do this by empowering the teachers, staff, parents, and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Marilena, your turn, please.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here and spending your precious time to witness this forum. My name is Marilena Gaona. I am a special education teacher I am an immigrant to. I came when I was 20 years old. And when my kids were born, it was very difficult not knowing how the system works. But right away, I knew that Ravenswood School District was not the good thing for my kids. So I sent them to private, I sent them, just like some of our candidates here, I sent them to the, I applied to the Tisley Transfer Program, and I sent them to Palo Alto outside of our district, which is not the best, but at least my kids had access to clean bathrooms and good education. Not the best education, but good education that at that time, they couldn't get here. If I win and get elected, I want to better prepare our students for better, for better for special, sorry, I want to better prepare them for middle school. Right now, they are not being prepared. And this proves because Sequoia High School and all other districts test the students when they get there, and they do very poorly. They have to put them in remedial classes, and even last year, a couple of years ago, High School, pay with their own money, a teacher to come and teach their students math so they could do better when they get there. I will make sure that all the students have access to clean facilities, working bathrooms, and unlocked bathrooms. I will make sure we hire better qualified teachers who have license, are experienced, and are compassionate to the students and do not pull their hairs or leave marks on the students when they are disciplining them. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilena. We're going to move to our first question now. And the question is, how do you plan to invest in the amazing teachers and leaders who are already working in our schools? And we're going to start this question with Bronwyn.
Hi, good evening. One of the things that teachers need to receive to continually update their practices is professional development, especially right now. We have doing Common Core standards throughout the Ravenswood City School District, and we were starting with Common Core standards long before some of the surrounding districts were. The teachers had to write all their own curriculum in order to teach it. That was an experience, let me tell you. Now, with the curriculums that we have, we have quite a few very strong curricula, but teachers need continual professional development around it in order to be able to facilitate the learning of the students. The, a lot of times, the curricula is not accessible right now. We need to make sure that our teachers are teaching grade-level standards to the students and not making, not giving them work that is below their own level because we need to challenge our students to rise to it. Teachers are continually being updated on improvements. We have coaches at every school right now, instructional coaches, working with teachers to increase their effectiveness with students. And especially now with distance learning, we need to meet these challenges and the challenges our students have with even more impact. Because when the kids come back to school, we realize that the learning loss is great, and we realize that we will have to do a lot of catching up. But we do not want to make, give these students work that is from a different grade level than where they are because they need to be able to continue to compete with their peers at this district and at other districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jenny, can you tell us about how you invest in the teachers and leaders in the school district?
So I think the first thing to do is just to make sure that we find money to pay our teachers. So I know our teachers are being paid, and I, they are being paid below, below other districts around the area. And so finding ways to make sure that we're increasing teacher salary, I think, is one of the first things that we need to do. The second thing, I think, is just to, as long as we have professional development, that's a really important part of being a teacher and staying informed and making sure that they have the tools that they need. I also think that they, that we need to make sure that teachers are being taught cultural competencies in that professional development. We need to make sure that we are, we are investing in cultural competencies as we are teaching our teachers. So a lot of times, our district, our kids investing in cultural competencies as a district so that our, our teachers feel like they are ready to teach the students from our community. All the times that I've talked to the students in our community, they have said that they have felt othered in the classroom, or they feel like there's not a teacher that supports them. And I think that the more that we have conversations and create these feedback loops between teachers, parents, and students, that will help teachers continue to have those conversations and to build better skills as they are invested in the classroom. All that to say as well, our teachers are doing an amazing job. And I know that because I have a daughter that is in kindergarten, and her, and the teacher has been invested, making sure that parents are, are able to access the techno, access the technology that they are able to pick up the materials that they need and just be present. And, you know, as a district, we are also trying to offer more support for them as well. So continuing to offer the supports that we can in the classroom to our teachers, but also making sure that we're offering the right professional development to them and continuing that feedback loop between teachers and parents and students.
Joel, can you tell us your thoughts about how we can invest in the teachers and leaders?
Sure. I mean, I think there's going to be some same things across the board. Teacher pay, it's, it's quite evident that surrounding teachers earn up to $30,000 more than teachers here in our district. And that, that causes, you know, that causes a high turnover rate. You may have great teachers, but they can't afford to teach her. Also, at times in the past, not recently, but in the past, a lot of the teachers felt isolated and non-supported with the prior administration. Now, that has changed. Now, I do see some great changes that have happened. There seems to be a better dialogue vertically in regards to having toses onsite, which help to, help the teachers that are currently onsite. And in regards to, are the five-year plan, you know, there, there is something in the Ravenswood five-year plan to recruit and retain highly effective and diverse team members. The plan is just strengthening teacher and leader performance systems, recruit strategies, and compensation. I guess the one thing that I see from the ground up is to ensure that the administration has a sensitivity to their voices. When the teachers feel that they are heard in the district, they have a more vested interest in, you know, in giving more to their students, which they already do. So, one of the major factors that we need to ensure is that we maintain a great communication between our teachers and staff and that we compensate them accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joel. Marilena.
The way I would invest on our teachers is getting them the salary they deserve. Teachers, including myself, I'm a teacher too. We are professionals, but we don't get that payment as a professional. We could make almost as close as a custodian, what the custodian makes when you're studying the first year. So if a teacher graduates and she comes to our school district, she could choose to go do something else and teaching and get about the same salary. So that deters. And I have said before in my other forum that we are the second lowest district who pays the lowest salary. We're the number second, and San Bruno is being number one. So we have a very low salary for beginning teachers. Teachers who have been here for a long time, they make more money, so they can afford to stay. But for the new ones, no. So we keep getting teachers who are not prepared, are not credentialed, or are only an emergency credential, and they have not even put a foot in an education program, but we have to hire them because there is nobody else to get here. So if I do get elected, that is my plan. Give a barrier, a better salary, higher salary for the brand-new teachers so we can attract them and retain them if they start at the highest salary. I think that's what is wrong with our district. And that's why we don't attract new teachers who are qualified and who know how to do the job. I will make sure that they get a bigger salary, and I'm thinking that we can brainstorm with other board members. But it comes to my mind, if we pass a bond or a parcel tax that can give them the salary the teachers deserve so they can stay with us, only the fully qualified teachers, not the one who mistreat our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Zeb, please tell us your thoughts.
Certainly, thank you. So, you know, I certainly have a lot of ideas about this, but I think the first thing to do is we have to ask the teachers themselves, right? So the teachers themselves are going to have significant ideas and, and thoughts on how they can better serve. They're not the only person, though, that I think we need to ask. The parents, students, as many of my fellow candidates mentioned, parents and students also need to be directly asked. It's a great idea to ask the kids, how can we make you more engaged? How can we make you more interested in learning? I think we also have a lot of success stories that are neighboring and throughout the country, and not even the country, throughout the world. We can look at other countries, other districts that are successful, and take their successful strategies and replicate them here. We can't do a copy-paste because we have our own community with enormous richness and enormous poverty compared to other places. As we all know, the transient nature of housing for many of our students in the district is a big issue that this district faces that some other districts don't face. I think we also need to get apprenticeships into the, into the classroom, that thought process. What am I going to do if I'm a student and I'm a teacher? How can I connect this student to resources that aren't just for the college-bound or aren't just teaching to a test or for high school? Of course, we have to get the fundamentals up as well. Some others mentioned, teachers aren't making enough money for the most part to live locally, unless they have special circumstances. So we really need to work on keeping the taxes local, reducing our reliance on charter schools, funneling some of that money back to the public school system so our teachers can have enough. Also, there was a member question about character. I think we demonstrate that every day, not only by how we behave as school board members, but how staff and teachers behave in and out of the classroom and modeling that behavior for the students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Zeb. Great, we're going to move on to the next question. This question actually came from someone in the audience that has just put it into the Q and A. So thank you for that. How would you bridge and balance academics with character and skill development for students? And we're going to start this time with Jenny.
Yes, so that is a great question. I think one thing to know is that schools are doing this, right? So I believe that classroom teachers are trying to do this every day. They're trying to teach the academics, but also build the skills and emotional, social-emotional learning that needs to happen. I, I think that there are ways that, there are ways that teachers can, can, can continue to bring that into the classroom when they are navigating what kind of stories they are reading and teaching reading skills to, to kids, talking about emotions and asking how they feel. Even with my daughter who's in kindergarten right now, a lot of the time, what they're talking about and what they're drawing or what they're writing when they're learning to write are about their emotions. So how do you feel? I like this. I didn't like this. She asks all the, all the kids every morning, how are you feeling today? And they get to answer, and one day, my daughter said silly, and it's just praising and acknowledging and knowing that whatever feelings and social-emotional skills or social-emotional feelings that they're feeling at that moment, that we make sure that we encourage that, that we encourage that sharing and navigating with one another. I think the other thing is, as you're in the classroom with kids, you know, going back to professional development, helping teachers understand like, hey, these are ways that you can build in the character and skills development into our kids. And then also helping our kids and encouraging them to know that you, they have something to offer their peers. So whether that be through group projects or even accessing extracurricular activities and having them engage in that way. I believe that those skills will help them grow and help them understand what are those skills that they're bringing to the table. And having teachers who encourage those positive interactions of acknowledging their feelings, acknowledging that they are valued and that their ideas are valued and their voice is heard. As a student, I think that those things are very, very important. And as a board, we can continue to invest in that by investing in our teachers, investing in our classrooms, and investing in the extracurricular activities that we offer them.
Great, thank you so much, Jenny. Joel, can you give us your thoughts on this topic?
I think it goes with my general sense of how education should work, and that's providing for the whole child, not just academically, but socio-economically, socially, emotionally, and civically. I witnessed, I witnessed this firsthand many a times where something happens outside the classroom during recess, you know, or during PE, and it's time to come back to the classroom. And you can just sense that the kids aren't ready to learn. I think having teachers get proper training, not just in delivering, you know, certain types of skill sets, you know, academically, but being able to understand, you know, when something is interfering with the ability of a child to learn. And what I've seen is, you know, teachers take a moment off the academic side and focus on the social-emotional side and bring that topic to light and letting the kids know, look, this happened, there's real feelings, it's going to interrupt. Let's, let's talk about it, let's come to a resolution, let's address it. That has so much positive effects in the classroom. Maybe not at that moment academically, but what it tells the kids is that our teacher just doesn't want us to learn but cares about us. And that grows such a strong, strong roots in the classroom. And it allows for not just academic growth, but growth between different students and even between in arguments. So I think, I think it isn't, teaching is an art form, and making sure that we equip our teachers to be able to teach our kids, not just academically, but the whole child is going to be important to have good outcomes in Ravenswood. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Marilena, your thoughts, please.
Yes, I believe we need to balance the academics and to the, and the character, developing the character of our students. How can we do this? You know, when you have parents who come from another country, it's very difficult when you go to a school where there is not that many of you in the classroom, when you cannot reflect yourself with the books that are in the classroom. So I believe that we need to start ethnic studies as young as kindergarten so the students can find themselves there. If you're proud of our, and that's how you start developing character. And also, one more thing, when we were, the members who were developing the five-years strategic plan, it seemed to me like everybody was forgetting the social-emotional. But I am a big advocate, I work a lot with Palo Alto School District and developing these two, the social-emotional, so to be, that was number one. And I kept bringing it up, and I urged my co-board members and superintendent to please make sure that that went in there. And it isn't there, and we're going to keep working on that. So, and I will make sure that we do not. So, and I will make sure that we do not lose track of that social emotional. We need to, that is number one, we want the students to succeed. Social emotional is, if you are not feeling well in the classroom, how can you learn? If you are being, somebody's waiting outside of the school to, to fight with you, that's a big one. They're not going to learn. And it doesn't matter if we do have very good facilities, very good leaders, great board members. If nobody's taking care of those fights, the students will not be emotionally healthy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Zeb, please give us your thoughts.
Sure. No, it's a great question. Thank you for it. I think character is first modeled, and that means by everybody. That's teachers, staff, board members, principal, whoever, other students, right? Also, it's then observed and then it's learned. I really respect what a lot of the candidates said. I think Joel made a really great point. I think it is about whole student care, right? Academics has to be job one. And we have to have, however, while academics is job one, you still have to have that whole student care where we're providing the nutrition, the counseling, the modeling, that behavior in and out of the classroom. And, and that's so key. We have to make sure that people are able, students and teachers are able to engage. If, if you, so that's the modeling piece, right? Is the nutrition, is the counseling, are they able to focus? Everybody able to focus without interruptions, right? Obviously, it's a big problem if the school is leaking and you can't concentrate because of that. If you don't have the right resources, that's an impediment as well. But there's a second piece too, which is sad but true, but there's also an enforcement element, right? How do you model that character as well in an enforcement way? How do you handle when a student cheats, when there's bullying going on in and out of the classroom? Or as Maria Lena mentioned, and I believe in her opening statement, that there was a reference, something where a student maybe got struck by a teacher. I didn't quite follow that, but there was something about, about preventing violence in the work in, in, in the, in the learning place. And that's critical too. People, students and staff have to feel safe in order to effectively learn. So, you know, something in my, in my personal and professional life that I always apply to anything that I do is how is what I'm doing leading to a more educated, just, or healthy community? And I think modeling that behavior in addition to the academics is how we get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Zeb. Bronwyn, please give us your thoughts on this subject.
Thank you. Bridge, the bridge and balance between academics and character and skills development is really very important. When we're teaching our students, we have to remember that we are teaching the whole child, as Joel said. We are not just teaching the child that comes to school every morning at eight fifteen or eight o'clock. Maslow's hierarchy of needs states that if you don't have your basic needs being met, such as food, shelter, warmth, affection, that it is very hard for a child to concentrate and get any higher functioning processes done. So we need to make sure that those needs are met at school if they cannot be met at home or in the community. Once we have addressed the socio-emotional needs of that child, then we can start looking at how to educate them properly. Restorative justice is very, very important for students who are having trauma in their homes or in their community or even at the school site. Children experiencing trauma need to express that and get that out in order to be in, and actually learn in a classroom. Restorative justice includes checking in and checking out in the mornings. It includes breaks are better, giving children a break when they need it. Keeping children's safety and health forefront in our minds while we continue to teach them the academics that the children need in order to be successful in school is vital. Those two things have to go together in order for a child to graduate well-rounded and able to tackle the world after high school.
Okay, thank you so much. We're going to move on to the next question, also from the member of the audience. What do you see as the biggest strengths of the district and the district's biggest weaknesses? And we're going to start this time with Joel, strengths and weaknesses.
I think that some of the strengths of the district, one is in the gains that I've seen in the arts. Recently, I've, I've seen in MA, where we filter a lot of our kids in the band and orchestra. I've seen a lot more kids from the Ravenswood School District, which a few years ago, that wasn't the case. And it's fun just to see how all that, it's not the same faces anymore. Now you see different faces. So in the arts, we've, we've made some improvements. In this, in the school district, I mean, this is my first time that I'm officially running, but a few years ago, in the prior election, I, I actually was going to run. However, I was a resident, not a US citizen, and I couldn't run. It inspired me to become a citizen and running now. But during those times, there was, there was a sense of isolation that ran through every department. You know, every department seemed isolated, even teachers from the same grade levels seemed isolated. And it was a survival of the fittest. One of the improvements that I've seen is now there is a lot of transparency in regards to, to the, the school district and communication. And, and as Bron would say, or one Ravenswood. So we've made great strides in that. We've also made great strides, you know, in our STEM classes that are throughout the district. And some of the challenges still, of course, you know, are trying to attend to the different needs to the children at their level and delivering curriculum that is at level and meeting those expectations. Those are difficult items that we must address. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Mary Lena, could you tell us your thoughts on this question?
Yes, thank you. I, I see some very good strengths comparing to the time when I ran for school board. I remember being in this forum and I believe that I was the only one who could, at that time, who could see all the problems that were going on in this district. And I am here again and I could happily say that we are doing better and I knew we could do better. An example of this, the board members never ever gave their phone number or their email address. I was the first one who said, please post my phone number and my email. And everybody said, wow, yes, put it. And because of that, now more people, all of the board members have their email, not their phone number yet, but email is a big improvement. So there are more connections to the community that we've never had before. Because it was just not allowed. If somebody wanted it to contact us, they would contact the secretary. The secretary would look for us and then we'll, you know, if we ever got that message, not to say that the secretary wasn't good, she was great. And she still is great. We have new leadership. Finally, we changed superintendent, which I knew since the very beginning that. That was my number one priority when I went in there, winning new superintendent. I worked as a teacher, she never listened to my concerns when I saw those students with the marks and I couldn't believe that nobody would do that and she wouldn't talk to me about it. So now we can listen. Now if parents have problems, they can come to me or to any other board member. The weakness says that we still on the crisis of enrollment every day, our financial crisis. The middle school is not doing so good. Another good thing is the community keeps supporting us. No matter what, they keep voting yes on the parcel tax or bonds that we ever ask. And so that is a big plus and some of his support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Zeb, please give her, give us your thoughts on this topic.
Thank you. Sadly, I'm going to start off with some of the weaknesses and then move on to the strengths. So weaknesses, you know, they are formidable. They are formidable. I'm pleased with some of the progress we'll make, touch on that in a second. As I mentioned, we have low housing stability, right? What does that mean? The statistic I last saw, I'm sure there are different reports, was greater than 50% of students in the district do not have stable housing. That's a huge, huge challenge that this district fakes, faces, that some of our neighboring districts, most of them, do not face. We don't have the pay to attract the top quality staff. There's no indictment of staff that are currently there and teachers. We have wonderful dedicated teachers and staff. But we need to have the monetary resources to get the, the best folks in. Also, we have a lot of emergency credential folks compared to other neighboring districts, which is a weakness. And we're frankly not a district of first choice. We have folks that are leaving the district if they can take advantage of the exchange programs and we have substandard scores. So strengths, a lot of great progress has been made. I think that the new administration and leadership, as well as community activism, has really built a sense of openness and consensus. And I think that things have started to turn and become better. So there's a lot of reason for optimism. I think there's been consensus seeking and trying to get input from the community, that means everybody in the district, to better shape the policies of the district. So I think that's also a strength. Also, come on, let's talk about cultural richness. I know some people talked, touched on that. But where else are you going to have a community where you've got a plumber living next to a doctor, living next to an immigrant family that just arrived, living next to a grocery clerk, right? We have that, that our neighbors don't. And that gives us a richness in this community that while we might be envious of others, you know, when you have a doctor living next to a lawyer, living next to a tech executive, it's a very different environment. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bronwyn, your thoughts on this?
So I think I'm going to go the route that Zeb did and start with our weaknesses and then move to the strengths. I think that our first weakness for this district is compensation for teachers and staff. And that means all, all teachers and all staff. And when I say compensation, it's just not, it's not just salary, but also benefits. The second great weakness that I see in our district is the loss of enrollment. This past year, we had to combine two of our schools and when I started here, we had over 8,000 students in the district and we're now down to just barely surviving and two elementary, three elementary schools and one middle school. The third area that I feel is a weakness is efficiency. It, it took the school board way too long to approve the strategic plan. The hiring of consultants after consultants after consultants and the waste of money was not efficient. The strength of the school district, currently the five-year strategic plan is fabulous. We need to continue working with that. The communication between the board, the superintendent, the teachers, the staff, the parents is greatly improved from what it was quite just a few years ago. Fiscal transparency was non-existent before and it is now becoming better and better. And finally, the offerings that our district has, surrounding districts do not have, is a huge strength that we need to capitalize on in order to bring back students who have left and to attract new students. These include the daily electives as art, music, PE, drama, band, orchestra, maker spaces in every single school that do weekly STEM lessons and our two unique schools, the Dual Immersion Academy at Los Robles and the Castano Turnaround School of Arts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jenny, your thoughts on this topic, please?
Yeah, so I'm going to start with the strengths. So I think that one thing that I really believe in is we have a strong community and our schools can be as strong as our strong community. So no matter where we are coming from, as we are entering the District of Ravenswood, I know that those people who are coming in are bringing their talents and their strengths and their skills. And I think that that is a really great strength. I think another strength of our community is that we are going, or our school district, is that we are going in the right direction. So, you know, we are doing distance learning and they are on the right track. They have technology support. They have technology for all of the kids. They have provided Wi-Fi hotspots for every single kid so that they can get, get online. And if a house needs more than one Wi-Fi hotspot, the board is figuring out how to do that and the school district is figuring out how to do that. I think as Bronwyn mentioned and as we have mentioned before, you know, having a really great leader, as many of the candidates have mentioned, having a really great leader in Gina Sudaria as our leader in this, as a superintendent, has been a really great experience because she's not only has been a teacher on staff, she's, she's committed to this district, right? And we have seen that just even in her, in her experience and also the way she has led us into this new set, the five-year strategic plan, the fact that it is there, I think that that is wonderful and that is a strength. I think when I think about ways that we can improve, I think it's teacher retention, making sure that we're paying them enough, making sure that we're creating social, like I was saying, cultural competencies so that teachers and staff and administration are caring for the, the kids in our district. And I think finally, it's just making sure that we're speaking positively of our district. Every time I talk to people, the first question is, are you, where are you going? Clearly, you're not going to go to Ravenswood. So what other option are you going to choose? And I think that we need to change that narrative in our district and we need to talk about the positive things that we have, we are offering, the maker space, art and, art and music and the, the great teachers that we have. I think that that's, those are all really important things that we need to make sure that we are telling the community so that they can come and join our schools.
Thank you, Jenny. We're going to move on to our next question from someone in the audience. The kids in our community have a uniqueness that the world needs. How will you raise the bar and how do you help them believe in their greatness? And we're going to start with Mary Lena.
Could you please repeat that question again? I'm sorry.
Sure. Our kids, the kids in our community have a uniqueness that the world needs. How would you raise that bar to make it hard, to make them believe in their greatness?
Every student who comes to our, to our district, the moment he steps a foot, he is unique. And we need to see them like that. We should not think any less of them. We have to raise the bar for every student, even if they come behind because they didn't have the experience of the press school, because they just arrived to this country. They have the intelligence to learn. We just need to give them a chance. If we don't raise the bar for them and we think that English learners, they're not going to do it. They're special ed, they're not going to make it. Just sitting back at the table, that's not going to work. We are lowering the bar and we're not believing in them. So every child to me is unique and learns in a unique way. There are different ways of learning and teachers need to remember that. They need to teach universal teaching, not just one method serves all. You have to use many different to reach every student. You can raise the bar by challenging them at their own level. Do not challenge them to a lot higher level because they're going to feel frustrated. If you're challenging to level that is super higher than where they are, but you've got to start challenging higher and higher and always expect that they're going to make it. They're going to graduate, they're going to go to college. I don't like when people say, you know what, this student is a special ed, don't worry about teaching them the ABC, you know? Just, they're just here to babysit. Never. I do not like teachers who do that or who send them out because they couldn't repeat something just because they're special ed and have speech delays. By sending them outside the classroom, they're not doing anything good or sending them up to the office because they couldn't repeat something that the teacher asked them to repeat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lena. Zeb, how would you help the kids in our community raise the bar and believe in their greatness?
Thank you. No, it's a great question. I think it's a question that probably every district asks because every district is unique, right? And, and there's a specialness to everybody, but right now we're talking about our district. So I think the biggest thing is we need to highlight a path forward for everyone. And what I mean by everyone is each student has their own aspirations, dreams, their family has aspirations and dreams for them. But that we have to focus on that everybody has a successful life after school and that we're not just gearing all students for a college track. And I know I've talked about this before, I'm going to keep talking about it, which is those apprenticeships, right? There's a great opportunity for so many of us to earn an amazing living without going on to secondary education, right? Get those apprenticeships into the classroom at an early age, create that expectation, give people the skills to, the physical and mental skills to use those apprenticeships and that job. Also, I think, you know, as I mentioned, there's a path for everybody and that means English as a second language or ESL. We have to have resources for that that help people, students, you know, get the, the education that they need and the tools that they need. Also, I think it's about showing the community in the classroom. So if, if the teachers and staff are living outside and parachuting in to teach and then leaving, it, that says something to the folks that are in the classroom, right? But it's an adorable cat. it, it, that says something to the folks that are in the classroom, right? But it's an adorable cat. And, and also I think that as I mentioned before, we're all demonstrating this by getting input from everybody. So that means not just PTA students, the parents, right, and teachers, but also the students themselves. How can we better make that for them? I don't have all the answers. We've got to let them give and share some of them with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bronwyn, your turn.
When students leave Ravenswood and go on to high school, they need to be prepared for the work that is expected of them to be successful. To meet that end, we need to address some of the educational inequities that affect systemically underserved students. Black Latinx indigenous peoples and English language learners, which make up ninety-nine percent almost of the Ravenswood population, are those that are systemically underserved. In order to ensure that Ravenswood students are prepared, we must have, give them access to four key resources. They must be doing grade appropriate assignments with support as needed. They must have strong instruction with deep engagement and learning and high expectations. We already have strong standards-based curricula. The students must have the chance to practice grade level competencies for processing information, to think critically about the texts and to solve problems using evidence. As Ravenswood attracts and retains more and more highly qualified teachers, the students will continue to receive this instruction from highly experienced educators, which will lead to stronger instruction, deeper engagement. And that is how we get our students to become successful. We look at how we are teaching them, making sure that it is socially relevant as well as um, what they need in order to progress as learners. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Jenny, your thoughts on this question?
Yes, so I think the first thing is to remember that each kid has their own individual differences. And as they enter our classrooms, that we acknowledge that and we value that and we celebrate that. I think the other thing is to know that we are building confidence. And so whether that is having books in the classroom for people, with people that look like them, talking about the leaders in our community, learning our community's history, learning um, the history behind, you know, every single decision or every street even that's in Palo, East Palo Alto or where their school is located. Those are ways that we can build and help them to know this is a strong community that you're coming from. I think the other thing is to build confidence and making sure they're connected to a mentor. So one of the things that I've learned from my conversations with students in the area and youth in the area is that they, if they had a teacher behind them or an adult behind them rooting for them and telling them that, yes, you can do this, you got this, you, you understand the material, you know what's happening, you got this, let's work on making sure that we figure out a way to, to help you get there. That has made all the difference. And that person, whoever that is, whether it was a teacher or a community member, is someone that they continue to go back to, to make sure that, um, to encourage them again when they're having a really hard time in high school and beyond. And I think that that is one thing that I really want to be, um, be looking into is how can we as a district connect every student with a mentor, whether it's someone on campus, off of campus, an extracurricular activity, or even a community organization? Who are those mentors that our students have and how can we give them that help and that encouragement, um, and that cheerleader really to help them through every single part of their journey?
Thank you. Joel, finally, your thoughts on this question, raising the bar?
So, you know, in a classroom, you can have a few students who are extremely high achievers. And in that same classroom, you know, you have somebody who just arrived, you know, that week into the country and they're both in the same classroom. And the challenge is, you know, how do we make sure that we're educating the whole child? We have such a wide span of differences. Again, we do have the five-year plan. And in there, it does say, you know, strengthen the multi-tiered system support process to track and measure student progress and provide targeted intervention through teacher collaboration and a particular focus, focus on tier three support for students with special needs. In other words, yeah, I mean, I think we've said, we've all said it. It's an individualized approach. Each kid is an individual. And a, as Jenny said, one of the best things we can do is provide somebody, lots of times it's a teacher, lots of time, it's, it's the uh, a person who's watching over recess where kids grow a bond to. And I think that's one of the main factors is enabling students to be able to build a connection with, with someone in the school. Lots of times it's a teacher, be the counselor to where they can feel comfortable in learning and being comfortable acknowledging that, you know, they don't know everything. So again, it, it's not an easy question to address. But it again, it, you need to provide individualized support for each student where they're at and think of them as an individual, not teaching across the board in a homogenous way. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to another question. Another kind of tough question here from an audience member. How would you approach a student who comes from a broken family and has no support at home? The, the question asker says, I've seen students with no support at home and they're still neglected at school. What would you do? And we're going to start with Zeb on that one.
It's a, it's enormous challenge. It's an enormous challenge in any environment, certainly in a learning one. First off, you need to have a system that's built for everybody, not just a specific student that you think is ideal. I don't think saying anyone here is advocating for that. But we have to have something that, that accommodates everybody and that includes people who are coming from, in this circumstance, a broken home. So number one is you've got to have the resources in my mind. That means you've got the quality support staff that I've been talking about all along, which means the counselors, the nutrition, the whole student care, right? But it also means you've got to have those master teachers in the classroom that are able to help. But it also means we need to have resources. So resources, not in a vague sense, right? Not just, oh, we need money. Of course we need money, right? But we also need the tools to learn, right? Right now, we're doing distance learning. If someone's coming from an unsupportive or broken home, we've got to be able to deploy the technology. We've got to be able to get the tools that they need to learn into their hands. And we have to be able to provide the nutrition that they need so that they can concentrate. There's a whole other spectrum that we could get into as well that I would certainly need to learn more about, but that I'm somewhat knowledgeable about, which involves social services. I don't know how broken of a home we're talking about in this circumstance. If we're talking about an abuse situation, that goes through a whole different channel than if we're talking about my parents or my grandmother or whoever I'm living with can't give me an iPad to help or, you know, insert electronic tablet here. I don't have erasers. I don't have clean paper. I don't have a binder. I don't have a backpack or shoes. That's a very different problem than I'm coming to school with bruises, right? So the first thing is we've got to identify the scope, I realize I'm running out of time, the scope and nature of the problem and then address it. And we need the resources and robustness of the system to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Bronwyn, how would you support a student that comes from a broken home to make sure they're not neglected at school?
Several of the candidates have made some very good points there. The multi-tiered system and supports is um, in place in order to help students who are experiencing issues that are beyond what we would consider for a normal student. Through that system, we can do exactly what Jeb just mentioned, which was figure out what lead does this child have? Is it something that be immediately addressed by getting them a backpack or shoes? Is it something that needs ongoing counseling? Do we have to make a phone call and get something uh, in place that's a little bit more um, stringent or um, uh, needing a little bit more advanced care than we at the schools can support? While the child is at school, we have to make sure that that child always has a contact person that they feel comfortable with. When we're talking about children who have experienced trauma or something called adverse childhood events, we know that the more of these traumatic experiences that they have will greatly impact them as they continue to grow up. So we need to address them as quickly as possible through a multi-tiered system of support. The classroom teachers, other staff at the school, counselors, and when necessary, going for outside support to make sure that the child and the family has what they need. Because when we are talking about our children, the children come from families and a lot of times what we can do to help the child is really helping the family first. Making sure that the family's needs are met so that they can help meet the child's needs.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Jenny, your thoughts on this topic?
So I think the first thing that we should do is really look at the child and treat the child with empathy. So really understanding what it is, is that's happening and how can we assist? I also want to say that the school has so many resources that they are offering kids in this situation because the community that we are part of, this is a situation that is, has to be addressed. So we have technology that is offered to all kids. There is supplies that are offered to all kids. There is food distribution that is offered to all children in our district, no matter what. And I think that as we talk about it, um, we need to make sure that we are also thinking about what does the child need now in the classroom? How can I create a safe space for this kid? Does it mean having, helping our teachers be stocked with snacks so that if the child is hungry or say wants something that's different than that's being offered, that they have the ability to go, go access that? Do, do they have the places and spaces where they feel safe and that connection to make with the teachers and with the other professionals there where they know, hey, if you're having a hard day and you're, and you're going to keep your head down the whole day, I'm going to be empathetic to you and I'm going to let you do that because I know you're going through a hard time. I think the second thing is to also understand how we navigate the academics in this situation. Cause I think a lot of times what happens with kids that are in this specific situation is that they end up feeling the pressure from turning, for turning in work or feeling that they have to do everything right away. And so being able to navigate those individual differences and having teachers and staff members who are empathetic and saying, hey, it's okay if you need an extra day to finish that assignment or why don't you stay after school for um, an hour and you can work on it to, we can work on it together and you can finish it and turn it in at that moment. Um, those are all ways that we can definitely help our kids. And finally, I know that we have counselors that are connected to our community. And so can we create spaces in our classrooms so that kids can connect with those counselors and those um, mental health professionals during class time instead of after class time?
Thank you, Jenny. Joel, your thoughts about this, please?
Okay, so I will go back to the five-year plan and they address it. It says, uh, provide safe, joyful and productive learning environments with proper social emotional support. Establish a vision of excellence for student culture and codified strength behavior management, management systems, right? Student Services Director. Also, they want to adopt and integrate a social emotional learning curriculum, including professional development plan for teacher, staff and admin. I mean, this is a very gray area. This is not a black and white. This isn't a, you know, mathematical equation. And this is where, you know, professional development is, is crucial. Um, what I've seen historically is, is just what we've described here is that it is, it, it's not a, it's a specific issue, you know, whether they don't have enough food at home or whether both parents are working and that specific student, as young as he or she may be, is a responsible person at home overnight. And so we really don't know until we investigate, until you know, either the teacher, the counselor or the principal, you know, has a one-on-one and we're able to diagnose, you know, what's going on. Right? Something as simple as having healthy snacks will do wonders. And in some, in some severe cases that I, that I've seen, it's the student doesn't have a place where they would consider safe, where they would consider they're the student, they're not the person holding down um, a secure place. So ensuring that the classroom, that the teacher makes the school classroom a safe place where the student doesn't feel the need to be more than a student. Right? That I don't have to be in charge. The teacher is here, has my best interest at heart and I can just be a student. Creating that environment takes effort. And like I said, it's, it's a gray area where we need, you know, proper development for our teacher, staff and admin. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Mary Lena, finally, your thoughts on this topic?
Well, this is something that really gets to my heart. I worked in Palo Alto School District where the rich and millionaire go and I got to see students who experienced trauma. And they came to me and they told me what was going on. In some cases, we have to call the police and they intervene. Some other cases, they just needed a few things and they were okay. Now, when I work at Bell Haven, amazingly, there was this student who was in a third grade year and he was with his teacher and the teacher was not connected to the student. I would go there to give services to my special ed students, wave hi to him. And then one day I saw him far away from the group and I said, what's going on? Why are you here so far away from your group? The group was playing in the playground. He said, my teacher doesn't like me. And I have noticed that. He, she always sent them to the office. You're punished because you raised your hand. You're punished because you talk. He wanted to say he knew the answer, which he was raising the hand, but that, but the teacher. He said, I just want to die. She doesn't like me. I went, oh my God, how can a two-grade child be saying this? I took him to the office, they called the ambulance, they took him into the ambulance. Next time, when he got out, they sent him to another school in the same district. He came back to a fourth grade and he did fine. He had one of those few great teachers that we have. So how can a student who is experiencing trauma, if he doesn't have a relationship with a teacher, be safe? We need to have, this is why I keep saying, we need to have fully credentialed, experienced teacher and compassionate, not authoritative. Our kids do not need authoritative teachers. They claim they are very good, but they do not have a relationship with the students. They scare them. They make them not want to live. Please, teachers, stop doing that. Love them.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on to our next question, which is the last question we're going to have time for before we go to the closing statements. So for this one, what are your thoughts on charter schools? And the, the Tinsley decision and tell us why you feel that way. And we're going to start with Bronwyn this time.
Ah, start with me again. I, I pretty much have been very forthright in saying that I am um, opposed to the Tinsley voluntary transfer program, um, as well as the number of charter schools we have in our district. Ravenswood has historically had um, a reputation that we now need to combat. The Ravenswood of 2020 is not the same as the Ravenswood of long ago. Ravenswood schools offer focused, meaningful activities that the surrounding public and charter schools do not have. Every student has electives or special classes daily, including computer programming, music, art, drama, PE band, orchestra. I've mentioned the maker spaces earlier that all of our schools have and that every student attends weekly lessons and we have the two unique schools of Los Robles Mc, Ronald McNair Academy, which is a dual immersion school for Spanish and English. And we also have the Castano School of the Arts, which is a turnaround art school. Teachers here are receiving ongoing professional development on how to better serve our students. What we need to do is challenge every parent in Ravenswood to take a long, hard look at where they are sending their kids, how long they are on a bus to their Tinsley school or what exactly is happening in those charter school classrooms. And encourage them to compare and look at what we have in Ravenswood and see what we have before choosing an alternative school setting for our, their students. Ravenswood has so much to offer now. We need our kids back. We need our average, average daily, our ADA, our money back that comes with the kids in order to support all of East Palo Alto and the eastern side of Menlo Park students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jenny, tell us your thoughts about charter schools.
So I think the first thing that we need to remember is the Tinsley program was actually a civil rights legislation. It was a mom who went to bat to say, I want equity at my school for my kids. So I think that we need to keep that in mind and we also need to challenge the other districts that are part of the Tinsley program to send their kids to our schools. Because that is what we do to bring equity to our schools is we say, hey, this is a two-way program. Because that is what we do to bring equity to our schools is we say, hey, this is a two-way program. If you are going to be protesting with us, then part of the protest is sending your kids to our schools. So you need to be part of our community as well and we need to create that access. The other thing I heard recently from a charter school employee, she said, if a charter school is doing their job correctly, they will put themselves out of business. And so I think that the first thing Ravenswood needs to do is just not to add any more schools. So I, I want to keep whatever is here right now because those schools have created communities and that those people are part of our community. But I also think that as we continue to know that our schools are strong and we are on the right path, we will get more students there. And as we continue that and more people choose to say, I want to be in a place that is diverse. I want to be in a place where my kids are not only going to learn academically, but they're also going to learn social emotional skills. They're going to learn grit. They're going to learn confidence. They're going to learn what it means to fail and pick themselves up and keep going. And I think that those are the things that we can be investing in and those are the things that I really care about. So what I want to say to parents is I am choosing Ravenswood and I am choosing Ravenswood because I believe in our schools. I believe in our teachers. I believe in our leadership. I believe in our community and I believe that our schools are going to be strong and they are strong right now. And my kid is getting a great education and yours, you can bring your skills, you can bring your talents and you can make this school even stronger and even better. And so those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel, tell us your thoughts about charter schools.
Charter schools, they lack the transparency of Ravenswood schools. This transparency is necessary because it helps maintain the checks and balances to ensure our children receive a well-rounded education. They tend to have a higher dropout rate than our Ravenswood schools. And the multiple studies have shown that their claim to better outcomes just isn't true. And at times they even score a bit lower than our Ravenswood schools. In regard to the Tinsley program, you know, these schools aren't, aren't local. They're, they're pretty far away. And often it takes anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half, depending on traffic, to transport the children there and back again. And that takes a toll on the kids sitting on the bus for that long. Not to mention the early hours of the morning for the pickup in order to make it to school on time. So when attending Ravenswood schools, you know, parents will benefit now from what we now have, a nice transparent and accountable school district where the child will be receiving a well-rounded education that is high quality and local. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Marilena, your thoughts on charter schools?
On the day from this forum, I told my child that she blame me 100% for keeping in East Palo Alto. To this I say, I blame the leaderships and, and teachers who did not do a good job. Palo Alto, and I said it back there four years ago, Palo Alto does not need charters. Why? Because they provide the students with an excellent education. So they not need it. We need them here because we have been failing our students. And to them, I say, thank you for educating few of the students. I know they have a long list. And I'll tell you something else. I visited the schools. I took time to enter the classrooms and see what's going on. I don't just go for what people tell me. And I have observed the scores they have been higher. There are other charter schools, but Kip has been higher. I'm not saying I want all the kids from Ravenswood to go to Kip. I wish we could give them the education and attract those Kip students and attract the Tinsley transfer students. I work in Palo Alto. I work with the Tinsley transfer students. I saw all parents got the best education for the students. One candidate right here sends a student, that child, his child to Las Lomitas. Why? Because it's the best place where he believes. It's the best place for his child to have an education. So we all have our desires for our kids. We want the best for our kids. So let's not criticize the charters. And let's do something to improve our district so we can bring those students back and then the charters will be gone. But as long as we need them, they're gonna be here. If we don't get qualified, credentialed teachers, stop, we need to stop hiring teachers. We do not even have a credential. One time we hired somebody whose particular presence had nothing clear. We're that bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Zeb, tell us your thoughts about this.
Sure. I'll start with a, a brief response. I am opposed generally to charter schools and I explain what I, what I mean by that. And also I long for a day when Tinsley is irrelevant. I grew up, most, most of my younger years were spent right across town in Menlo Park. So I went to Las Lomitas, La entrada, right? People in this district, in that district, they're not looking around saying, where can I transfer my kids to? Right? They got basic aid status. They've got property taxes rolling in that they aren't sharing with the state. So if we build up our district to the point that we are a district of first choice, who cares about the Tinsley program? In the meantime, as was mentioned by, I believe Jenny, it, it's legislation, right? We, we have to live with it, right? But I want to get our school district to the point where we're first choice and we just not a, it's not a thorn in our side. I also think, and I mentioned, I oppose charter schools. I oppose charter schools because I think it weakens resources to all students and devotes them specifically to those that are able to participate in the charter school system. At its worst, the charter schools, or let me start with it's best. At its best, the charter school system is less transparent, less open and has greater autonomy than the public school system. That's at its best. At its worst, it's super opaque or non-transparent. And some charter schools charge more money, right? So they take the money that they're getting from public dollars and then they're charging a premium on top of that, which makes it inaccessible for any of the residents or the non-millionaire residents, I guess. So that's, that's my position on both Tinsley and charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, one more thing, whatever, however many seconds I have left, please throw that. Also, while I mentioned that I oppose charter schools, that doesn't mean that if elected, I'm going to throw a switch and get rid of them tomorrow. Someone mentioned they're part of our community. Can't do that, but we have to work to re-devote those resources back to the public system. And if something comes in front of me that says, do you want another charter school? My answer is going to be no. If there's an opportunity to scale them back and repatriate those students, my answer is yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. This is, brings us to the end of our debate, end of our forum. Because we do have a number of other additional questions, but we are out of time. So what I'd like to do now is to move to the closing statements and we're going to go in the opposite order than we did in the beginning. So we're going to start with Marilena and you each have two minutes again for your closing statement. Marilena?
Again, my top priorities are to hire fully credentialed teachers who are compassionate and meet the students where they are at and bring them up. Who do not criticize them, who respect them and do not make them feel suicidal. That's my top priority. Number two is better prepare our students for high school. We're doing very poorly on this and there are tests to support that. There are the results. We need to have cleaner middle school with bathrooms that are working. Recently, two of them have been remodeled because I asked for them. Cause they were locked. They were not working. Our students were holding their need to go to the restroom because they were not working and the ones who were working were very smelly. I went there and I was throwing up. We need to have better supervision so we can decrease or stop the fights completely. We need to have our students engaged, not sitting back in the back of the buildings and nobody system. We need to make sure that when we open our schools back in person, we test every student before they come in and the teachers and continue testing. We need to make sure we provide all teachers with training and technology, high training, not just few to get by. We need to make sure every student has access to technology because now we have some curriculum that requires the use of computers at home. And we thought they did, but it comes up that they don't because we still even need 19 hotspots. By the way, if anybody has 19 hotspots, please let us know and we'll pay them back when we get the ones that we order. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Joel, your closing statement, please.
Okay. I'm running for school board because I want to provide a well-rounded opportunity filled education for the students, students of Ravenswood. Meaning that I will provide for the whole child academically, socially, emotionally and civically. Additionally, I want to continue the momentum that has begun fostering community. The momentum that is fostering transparency and communication between all our stakeholders, the students, the family and the administration. I will focus on three main points. The first is to increase enrollment. We can do that by implementing universal preschool before school care and highlight the unique educational programs of Ravenswood. Second, fiscal responsibility. Want to make sure that we manage taxpayer dollars responsibly, equitably and strategically in service of the students. Transparency in the budget and how monies are spent. And third is to support the implementation of the Ravenswood five-year strategic, strategic plan. I'm endorsed by the Ravenswood Teacher Association, the California School Employee Association, Regina Wallace Jones, the Mayor of East Palo Alto and San Mateo County Democrat, and the San Mateo County Democratic Party. Thank you for your time. Hopefully I've earned your vote. If you have further questions, you can refer to my website at www.empowerravenswood.org. Thank you.
Thank you Joel. Jenny, your closing statement, please.
I'm running for school board because I have a daughter in the district. I am a community member. I live here. And both of my kids have always been in care at Ravenswood in East Palo Alto. We believe in our schools. We believe in our community and we believe in our school district. And I want to be a voice at the table because I have a personal stake in this district. I want our district to grow and be strong. And I believe that when we have a parent voice that is there, who is directly affected by the decisions that the board makes, our district can grow stronger and get stronger. I come with experience. I have worked in education across an expansive field. I have worked in a law firm right out of college. So I know the, the preciseness that you need to read budgets, to read contracts, to understand the, the meaning behind the writing. I have studied early childhood education, worked as a preschool teacher and I have taught early childhood education in the community colleges. I know what our kids from zero to eight need to be successful and to learn and to develop and to grow. I work with high school students right now who are in the process of applying to colleges and understanding what things that they need and what they need to be successful, not only in high school, but also beyond high school. Those are all things that I bring to the table. But most importantly, I want to be a voice for all of the students in our community. I want our kids to know that they have someone that believes in them and believes in their schools and wants them to succeed and grow. So I really hope that you guys would choose me to be that voice at the table. And like I said at the last forum, even if I'm not chosen, I will still be involved in Ravenswood because my kids go here. So I will still be on that council, the school sites council. I will still be attending board meetings as I have been the last few years, even without a kid in the district. Those are important things and those are things that I will continue to do no matter what. And please do contact me. I would love to have a conversation with you. You can go to my website, jenniferavenswood.com. You can also just email me, jennyvergesbloom@gmail.com. Thank you.
All right. Thank you Jenny. Bronwyn, your closing statement.
Thank you. Again, thank you for having us all here for tonight's forum. And thank you everybody out there who I cannot see for listening in. My top three priorities and how will, I will accomplish them for school board this year. Increasing enrollment through targeted marketing of the unique programs available to students attending Ravenswood schools in order to attract new and returning students. Implementing universal preschool so that children start very young and continue through the regular school program, starting in TK or kindergarten. Providing after-school supervision because some children go to other schools because this is avail, avail, I mean, providing before-school supervision. Because some children go to other schools because that is what's available for the parents who have to go to work early. And finally, increasing teacher and staff salaries all around so that we have the best qualified teachers to attract all those students back. Secondly, improve fiscal responsibility by ensuring that taxpayer dollars are used responsibly, equitably and strategically in service to the students of Ravenswood. I would like to address the systematic educational inequities that affect historically underserved students, including Black, Latinx, Indigenous peoples, English language learners and students with learning differences. I want to focus on anti-racism and the dismantling of the intentional discrimination that is part of our school system here in the United States. I'd also like to introduce ethnic studies to the middle school students because knowing about others leads to tolerance and acceptance. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Ravenswood Teachers Association, the California School Employees Association, the Mayor of East Palo Alto, Regina Wallace Jones, the San Mateo Democratic Party, the San Mateo Central Labor Council and the San Mateo Stonewall Democratic Club. If elected, I will be in service to the parents. I will be in service to the teachers and staff at the schools. I will be in service to the community who put me there. But most importantly, I will be in service to the students. We are and always will be one Ravenswood. For more information, www.empowerravenswood.org.
Okay. Thank you so much. And finally, Zeb, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. I think we have a lot of great candidates here. I of course am asking for your vote and I think I am a little bit different than most of them and certainly the best qualified. First generation American, as I mentioned, immigrating from Mexico. I have deep county and state relationships as well, politically that is. I'm an expert in finances, organization building and building diverse coalitions to achieve political goals. I always have, not always, but most of the time have creative and fresh approaches to things. And I want to hear from everybody in the community, the students, teachers and parents, as well as others, right? How we can build a better system? I also don't have a conflict or an appearance of conflict. So what I mean by that is I wouldn't have to recuse myself on anything that came before the board. I'm not employed by the district and I'm not married to anyone that is employed by the district. So I don't have that kind of a conflict or appearance of conflict where I would have to recuse myself from different items that came before the board. Also, I, I do have three goals, which I mentioned at the beginning and which I will mention again now. I want to keep our taxes local. I want to enhance the quality of education and I want to reduce our reliance in the presence on, of charter schools. I also think the financial expertise comes in here a lot. I want to be looking for matching federal and state dollars as well as grants that we can capture, which we are in some small ways now, but we're still missing out on a lot of them. I want to build a system that works for all. I previously talked and want to remind everyone about apprenticeship programs as well as making sure that the testing is, is, our test scores are better as well. So the, both the college bound and those that are going to be working right after high school can be successful in both fields. I'm union endorsed by Operating Engineers Local Three, as well as the County Employee Management Association. Please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you Zeb. I want to thank all of the candidates for your participation, for your willingness to run for this important office and personally for making my job as the moderator very easy. Thank you so much and I want to wish good luck to all of you. I want to thank the league team members who are here this evening with us, the Mid Penn Media Center for assisting us tonight. And especially I want to thank you, the audience for coming. And I really want to remind you to vote between now and November 3rd. There is not an election I can remember in my lifetime that was as important as this one. So please vote, please make sure your friends and neighbors and everyone you know gets out to vote and this is our right and what we have to do. So please do that. If you have questions that were not answered tonight, we had many more questions and we had the opportunity to answer. Please go and talk to the candidates individually, go to their websites, et cetera. If you would like to look up additional information about the candidates and on state and local measures and get a video replay of this forum to be posted soon. It will be on the league's election website, which is www.votersedge.org. That's V O T E R S E D G E dot org. And again, I want to thank you all for participating and spending your evening with us.